Thank you, Lori.
That was Andy.
All right, well, welcome everyone to the San Diego City Council regular session meeting Monday, April 4th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Would you please stand for the question?
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Lori.
Thank you. Counselor Fage.
Here.
Counselor Kendall.
Here.
Counselor Martinez.
Here.
Counselor Payton.
Here.
Counselor Sheldon.
Present.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
And Mayor Lenahan.
Here. Thank you.
Item number five on our agenda is the consent agenda. We are approving tonight's agenda and we're also approving March 21st, 2022 City Council minutes. Are there any corrections or changes that we need to be aware of? To the minutes? If not, I'll enter your motion.
Cooper Duff.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Counselor Kendall, seconded by Counselor Martinez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Bearing none, motion carried. Item number six on our agenda is a public comment. Lori, do you have any record of anyone online or publicly wanting to speak about something that is not on our agenda?
I did not receive anything prior to the meeting and I don't know about the people that are online. I guess they could raise their hand if they had something or speak up.
If there's anyone on the, if there's anyone on the call and you wish to speak, please go ahead and unmute. Raise your hand. All right, let the record show that no one is speaking at this time. At this time, though, I do want to make an introduction and give a brief update. So as you know, we had the If I Were Mayor contest for, sponsored by the Oregon Mayor's Association, and we had the local contest where students were to provide either a poster or an essay or a digital presentation, and then they would be voted on and chosen, a winner was chosen. We had one submission for the fifth grade for the poster contest. And I wanted to introduce to you the mayor this evening. His name is JR Estilio. He's a fifth grader, lives on Dairy Creek Road in North Plains. He is also originally from Utah. He's lived in North Plains for almost five years now. He lives on a horse boarding ranch with about 25 horses and he does have one more horse in the family. His mom and dad and sister are here with him this evening. In addition, JR is on the Horse Grove swim team. He's very creative and loves to build and engineer things, particularly Anam Matronics. I have to learn a little bit more about that. He loves to do digital art and has been working hard and saving up for all of the right equipment to use in the digital aspect. So at this time, I'm going to introduce JR and we'll move over to the podium because I do have his poster with us and I'm hoping that he will then take a few minutes and just kind of explain his poster to us and we'll go there. JR. And if you want to get, come closer, Mom, and take a picture, you're welcome to do that. Sir, everyone, this is JR. Can you hear me?
No. Yeah, it's on.
Yes, it's on. All right. So I'm, this is JR and he's a fifth grader at North Plains Elementary and here is his poster. And so I'd like, like to, I'll hold it out like this if you want to explain it to the city council. Would you like to do that? Okay. Here. Let me take this. So, yes, I was mayor. So the first one was the most overrated one, move carolons below ground, most roads in the fort. So, some trees do not make it, like, go out dark. Second one is improve fire station with a helicopter so it can help people in need and the police for protecting us from future fires. A police department that's ready to protect us from, like, lines and, and like, fires. Or just an injury in general. First one is to build an awesome bike, skate and water feature park to play at, like, whenever you want. I like the idea of a skate park and a, and a bike, and like a bike park, right? And are you a skateboarder? No, but I am a biker. You like to, you do, all right. And I really also liked your idea about putting the telephone wires and the wires underground, right? And, uh, and protecting trees, even, keeping the trees. We talked a little bit about that, didn't we? Yes. Did you want to elaborate on any of that or? Not really. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for JR?
I have a helicopter and it's a great addition.
Yeah, that would be a big part of it.
Yeah, you have a good design on it, like you have a cool prototype as well.
Yes. Well, JR, thank you so much for participating in the contest. He, I went to the elementary school this morning and presented the gift card to him in front of his students and his fellow students and the teacher and the principal. And I think the super, the assistant superintendent, superintendent was there as well. So that was quite, quite fun. It was nice and festive, so that was great. And so then the next step will be is I will send this to the state and then he has an opportunity to participate at the state level where he could win either like $500, $300, or $100, depending on where he places, you know, for a second or third. So it's my understanding he's going to use that money towards, he already has a laptop.
Yes.
Right? And so you're going to use that money for equipment for the laptop, correct?
Yes.
And what kind of equipment will you need for? Like, I need to be like, let's say like a DJ set because I'll, because I'll be like making music with this. Okay. And I need to be thinking about the other, I do need a joint. Okay, all right. Well, congratulations and just everybody give me a minute. Stand up here in front of all of us, too.
Yeah.
So, all right, well, I'll take that. Thank you so much. I guess dance off. Well, I think it's pretty cool. So I'll, yeah, good job. And I'll take this back to you after, after I get it prepared. Okay? All right. Yeah, it's cool. Very, very cool.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
Absolutely.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
You too. All right. All right, item number seven, A, resolution number 2178, adopting the supplemental budget. Bill, hand this over to you.
Sure, I'd be more than happy to do that. So council, we have a supplemental budget resolution here and basically what it amounts to, as you've been able to review it, is completion of the SDC methodology study that you heard the findings about very recently and made a decision about. When we budgeted for it back last April, we thought most of the study would be done before July 1 and because of the audit being delayed and some population numbers being delayed, most of the study actually ended up being done as budgeted or cost to be budgeted after July 1. So we basically just need to amend the transportation SDC budget to account for the money being spent this biennium instead of at the end of last fiscal year. So it's kind of a formality just to properly account for the spending happening after July 1. And that's what we have before you. So the supplemental would add $17,000 to what you have already adopted for the biennium and that was $3,000 to, to a new total budget for the, the fund of $20,000.
Any questions from council? All right, seeing no questions, thank you, Bill. There is a motion in your packet and I will enter in a motion to adopt Resolution 2178.
I move to adopt Resolution 2178, adopting 2021, 2023 by medium supplement budget to appropriate funds for items unknown at the time the budget was adopted. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Counselor Smith, seconded by Counselor Fage. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, bearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Um, let's see, eight, new business, nine, new business, and then 10A, city manager report.
Already here. Okay, well, first off, I want to, there's a few things I want to go over. Mayor did a great job and stated the city. I don't know if everyone got a chance to, to see it, but it was good to have TVC TV here for that, providing some graphics and making a nice production. We are planning to have the cleanup day on May 14th again at St. Edward's Church. We're still searching around. We'll find a way to fund it, but Metro doesn't do the landfill. They don't do the vouchers anymore. They stopped doing that program. So last year we used some CARES Act funds through, through COVID funding, but so we'll, we'll search for some other resources this year, but I think we have a pretty good, good idea of what we can do. But we got a planning meeting this week to go over some of those details, but GovRino is on board and the county will still do the mailing for us. We've got a couple interviews to do later this week for our planning manager and we're shooting to do interviews for Public Works starting at the end of next week. The Public Works Director, so I've been busy going through that information and those processes lately. So if you recall, the SDC finance consultant, when they did a work session in February, we went over a couple different financial matters. One was system development charges, obviously, and the other one was updating the transportation utility fee, which hadn't been touched in 11 years. So we're going to have a public hearing on that on the 18th based on what we had heard in the February work session. So if you recall, currently the utility fee is $1.33, hasn't been indexed, hasn't changed since 2010. And in the work session, in the budget that was passed, we have that fee being $5 per utility bill. So we plan to have a public hearing on that at the next meeting on the 18th. We'll do some messaging to the community so folks know they have an opportunity to show up there. So we'll have that in the newsletter and we'll have some posts on that as well. And that goes towards street lights, street maintenance, and any, anytime there's a down year from the fuel tax, let me help pay the bond back to. Busy spring and summer coming up. This is IGA season. Our intergovernmental agreement with the WCCLS for library expires at the end of this fiscal year, so that needs to be renewed. We spent a lot of time going through that. And as, as an executive group at WCCLS, the attorneys looked at it. Rod and I have gone over probably four or five times. It's, it's in pretty good shape and there's not a lot of changes, but that will be before the council and the same way at the sheriff's office, too. We've talked about that before. We'll have a work session with them in early May to discuss some of the changes, improvements, costs, some things like that that we may want to consider in that IGA. So that will be the first meeting in May. And then the first meeting of June, 3J, we'll do that CIP, CIP progress report then. And that'll give us a full year of going through the CIP, so that'll be, that'll be fine. And that attached to my report here, you'll see a map. If you don't have it, I can pull it up on the, on the screen. But these are five park names from the five parks in Bryn Hill that the Parks and Rec Board is recommending. This is based on them not only discussing that at their board meeting, but also consulting with the North Plains Historical Society. So as you know, the, that area has some ties to, you know, different prominent figures that were in and around North Plains and have deep history with North Plains. So those five park names were chosen based on that history. Does anyone need me to pull up that? We're not, they're not making a decision today, but I just wanted to get that on your radar so you see what they recommended. And then there would be a resolution in the future to, to make those adoptions permanent.
Will we, I have a question. Will we be adopting all of them at one time?
That's what I'm trying to figure out with the attorney because by the time, this is probably before you, only two of those parks will have been recorded, two, two recorded plots. And as you know, there's going to be five, so I need to determine that with him. If we don't name them specifically in the document, it would say a park, you know, near or near or approximately near such and such. So, you know, like a park that's near Timmerick Street and North Avenue, that would be the Millie Provis Park. That's pretty obvious because all the street names are recorded in the, in the master plan. But each one of these parks are not. So I don't know that just yet. That's why I haven't brought this resolution forward just yet. He's kind of helping me determine that. But anyway, those are the, the names recommended from the Parks Board and the, based on their discussions with the Historical Society. I realize I didn't really update anything on the URA when I was reading this earlier today, but you, you kind of know the latest. We, we have a downtown plan. Meeting downtown, open house. It's going to be hosted in Beat Freeze woodworking area. We're going to have a shaved ice truck there, some barbecue, a barbecue truck from a local guy. Hopefully he returns my phone call and remembers that he's, he's agreed to do it. And so we'll have some concept plans and, and feedback to get to, to show to the public that shows up and to get their feedback. And there's a community survey that went out today that accompanies that. And GOA, nothing new since our, our meeting before. They're just still refining some things. And then last week, we applied for two grants, another TGM grant. That's the grant that's funding our downtown plan. We applied for one having to do with the UGB expansion, concept planning and financial planning for, for infrastructure in 2023. And we applied for an Americor Rare member to help implement the downtown plan. So we've actually reconfigured the old conference room. It just got a paint job. We're throwing out a bunch of junk in there and putting some new desks in there. And so we would have space for a volunteer and intern, a workspace, a workstation there. So that's what we're planning to do. And that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. And in addition to information you received on Friday, too.
So the, the, sorry, the online survey was live today.
Today.
For the downtown improvement plan.
Mm-hmm.
And then the date on the event is April 12.
April 12, correct.
When does the online survey close?
April 19. Yeah, we got a week before, a week after.
Okay.
Yeah. And there's, I don't know if a Facebook post went out today. If it didn't go today, it's going tomorrow, for sure. Didn't today?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. And an app notification. I did get that. Yeah.
Yeah, no, the TGM grants are pretty much a given. How, how does that work?
No, they're pretty competitive. So we, we got one in 2020. I think the city got one a few years before that to update the TSP, but they're, they're very, they're pretty competitive. But.
What time for you to put those in?
Well, 3J helped us with the one before. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it was, it was, it was a big group effort, but they helped and it made it a better, it made it a better project. But the guy that would do the reviewing, he is on, he, we have a pretty good relationship with him. He works for ODOT, so we'll see. Yeah.
Any other questions for Andy? Go ahead. Counselor Stan?
Yeah, I've got one. I know this one. We, I go by the Sunset Ridge Park and the school over there. The school grounds are used way more than Sunset Ridge Park. It's probably because there's more things to do and covers and stuff. And when Polygon back in those days came to us, they had this great finale that they're going to put all the stuff in. Kind of fell short from what they were doing. Now they've got these five parks over there. Are we, I don't think you're around for most of that, but are we going to be more on to them about, let's put in those parks?
Oh, yeah. You talking about the, the equipment that's going to be going in Bryn Hill? Yeah, because they, they will submit an application to, to the city and it's sort of an administrative decision on what, what the, what the park design is going to be. But they've, for each one of these parks, the two that they've submitted for so far, they went to multiple Parks and Rec Board meetings and had dialogues with them. I know a couple of you were there. Counselor Fage, I specifically remember you being there talking about getting in the weeds about, what's the, what's the Italian game where you, abacchi ball? Yeah. So, yeah, they've, they've been pretty responsive and showing up to meetings and having some, some design, design feedback sessions. Yeah.
Yeah, I have a lot of, especially doll games and chessboard. Who's, whatever's in those chips is the one. I think there's money in the budget to do the air conditioning before summer comes this year. Is that something that's, I don't think I was mentioned at all?
It's going to be done. Yes. Yeah, yeah. The guy doesn't need a, we were waiting him to, to finalize his bid with an electrical component, but he's a pretty quick scheduler. We, we already know which guy we're going to go with. The lowest quote and does good work. So, yeah, we're, we just talked about that today and I assured everyone it'll be in before June, definitely.
Then the last one, I'm not sure. Memorial Park, is there something going on Memorial Weekend here like last year or are we just going to?
So Cindy Hurst reached out to me and we were going to connect after the state of the city address. So I just need to put that on my radar with her and figure out what we're going to do and what volunteers and who's going to participate.
Because if we did, we could turn it over to the Veterans Association or something to do with, is my task. That's the question.
Okay. I should probably have someone name her next. Any questions for Andy?
I, I will just mention to, this would have showed up in the Friday report, but I'll get it out now. There was some vandalism at the Veterans Park over the weekend.
Yeah.
Wasn't, it could have been much, much worse, but that's pretty disappointing. Yeah.
I was going to bring that up. I have seen, I would say probably middle school age skateboarders over there. They've been doing that and I even had made a comment to one of them to not riding a skateboard on the bricks and that lasted probably for as long as I was there. So that is a problem. So maybe we need to rethink the need for skate parks in North Plains.
Can't run it. Can you put no skateboard on your, kind of clear that, but, good.
But that man has been next to the Veterans Park. That's being there now and soon to be for some time. Is the seal, this part maybe, well, I think it's like here or is it somewhere else?
It's going to be built on.
Is it, yeah?
We'll, we'll probably get a pre-app.
Between the, the Veterans Park, yeah.
Oh, really?
There's company from, an electric company from Leaverton that's moving there.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it has plans.
Yeah. We just want another thing. I brought this up. It seems like they're busy by subway for a while and now it's just like it's, so they had to halt. Is it doing for permits or is it just?
Typically, that's what their slowdown is. They'll get to a, a certain point and if they're ready to build, it's usually they're waiting on the building permit backlog at Washington County. Yeah. 15? I heard it was 20, but maybe, maybe they're working through it.
20 weeks out, that's.
Well, for patio colors, they're out 10 weeks, so I'm still waiting for the line. And it's been, it's been two, about two weeks.
Surgeries are out, too.
So I'm, I did want to, any other questions for Andy? I'm sorry. Counselor Martinez? So as you saw in Andy's report, the fireworks were not able to have that this year. And unfortunately, but that's just the way it goes. I think we're, there's been another idea that's been floated out there for the community, have a Fourth of July parade and possibly an old fashioned style picnic at Jesse May's. So more to come there. We might meet bodies, volunteers. I know the NICE, PIPNIS and the NPEA will be trying to try to coordinate, to figure something out. So if you want to participate in that conversation, let me know after council. We can definitely get you dialed in to help if you volunteer, if necessary. And then I attended the Washington County Transit Committee on that board, I mean, on that committee. It's through the Washington County Coordinating Committee. They are working on to, they're reviewing goals and objectives for the statewide transportation improvement fund and the transit development plan. And they're wanting perspective and insight, just to go over the plan, but also any additional information from rural communities. They want to make sure that we're hitting all the, you know, checking all the boxes and considering the needs of smaller communities like ours and banks and Gaston for this plan. So I participated in my first meeting on the 29th and then I had a couple of other meetings. They're targeting getting all of this information to the Board of Commissioners in August. So I think I've got another three meetings on, on the, for that. Oh, and Andy was, you participated in the meeting as well, so. And Pete Chiropractic had a nice clinic for the community. Actually saw a lot of folks coming in and out and it was just an introduction to their business. So there was a lot of, a lot of really positive, you know, connecting with people and that sort of thing. So I, I was there to support that group as well. The Legal Oregon Cities had their meeting here last week. That was a very positive experience. The senior center provided meals, a nice luncheon for that. And then lastly, I know that some of you have been reading in the paper and we talked about it, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. The. The um uh Pumpkin Ridge Golf Course is owned by a company called Escalante and they're out of Texas. Um and they are hosting um a three-day tour, July first, second, third, at the Pumpkin Ridge. And um it's being organized through the 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 live, a live golf, golf company, uh L A B. Um anyhow, there's a lot of controversy around uh the funding for this organization and where the funding's coming from. It's coming from the the Saudi Arabian government essentially. And so there's a lot of controversy around this particular event where there are eight or nine tournaments.
Just eight. Yeah, something like that.
Ten more. Um the first one, I believe, is in London and then the second one is in Pumpkin Ridge. So essentially um we will be the first United States inaugural um golf event for them. Um the Sheriff Garrett and um Andy, myself, um Commissioner Gary Willey and Washington County Visitors Association, we had a few meetings and we had a meeting with Escalante and Liv last week. Um via Zoom. Um and just to get a perspective, kind of a high level, what what they were looking for from us, some of our questions, some of our concerns, we agreed that we would uh put together a list of questions, comments, and concerns and then bring that back to them for a meeting this week. So I haven't checked my email recently, but I think we're trying to plan it for Wednesday morning somewhere around eleven or before eleven.
I think so, yeah.
Um and um take our list of concerns to this organization. Um it's my sense that um you know, they'll they'll listen to us and they'll take note and and you know, they they wanna try to make it as as pleasant as they possibly can, but they're definitely gonna be forward with this event. Obviously, it's on a private private property. There's nothing, not not much we can really do about it, right? But they're here this this week, um basically getting the lay of the land at Pumpkin Ridge and in the outline communities. Um we do have a list of concerns and um you know, from safety to traffic to police coverage, uh tourism, Port Portland. I mean I I think we've thought of just about everything we could possibly think of that we wanna share with them uh this week, but uh um there have been a couple of articles, you know, circulating online. Um obviously, we have no clue, you know, uh about protests or possible protests or anything like that. Who knows what that's gonna look like? We don't have a crystal ball, but um fortunately Sheriff Garrett is um in line, you know, talking to the folks that he needs to talk to, you know, with boots and ears on the ground. Um so although we, you know, and I, although personally I don't support it um but I I want to know what their plans are going to be for this event, um because obviously um it's, it will potentially impact our community and safety for this community is my number one priority. And you know, we want to make sure that they hear our voices, hear our concerns and and provide us with their plan, you know, that 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 has the less, the least impact on our community as possible. So I wanted to just make sure that we were all, we all got the same information tonight about this. More information will be forthcoming, obviously, after our meeting on Wednesday. We'll you know, um yeah, we'll provide, hopefully provide, you know, more information on Friday. But I don't see, it's it's not a one that mean this is gonna be, this is, this is gonna take several meetings and um I think it's so fast tracked, it's gonna happen in ninety days or less, so uh it's it's pretty fast tracked. So um I think once it gets out, who knows what it, who, who, just who knows, you know? Again, I don't have a crystal ball. We have no idea what kind of impact this will have on our community, but we will do everything that we can in our, in our power to, you know, lessen the impacts as much as possible. So I'm sure if there's any questions, if there's comments or concerns, I'll open it up.
I I I noticed, I think, a week ago that Senator Wyden had some concerns too. So I'm not sure if you reached.
I read his article, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, he's got some concerns either or clap, anybody else that's up here, we put him in a conversation about with us, he might he broke up to that.
Any other comments that folks wanna share now? If not, we can pop up later.
No.
Probably before eleven.
Well, I, you and I both had to be gone by eleven, so no, nothing nailed that. Sometime before eleven.
Wednesday morning. So we'll be able to report more after meeting. But if you have any questions or comments, concerns, if you wanna share with me, feel free to reach out to myself or Andy before and before Wednesday. Um alright, well, that's all I had. Um councillors, any, anything to report? Councillor Smith?
I thought the uh state of the city went real well. People watched it again. Oh my god, Mike did a great job.
He did.
He always establishes me. Oh, yeah. One thing I've noticed over probably three plus years that the council woman from Hillsborough or Tilburg Beach, she's been very concerned about keeping an eye on what we're doing with our UGBs. It would be posted up on the board and we should have a picture of it, so everywhere what we're up to.
Yeah, yeah.
See, I know, it's just not, I mean I, we had that meeting with the L C L, have I said, she asked a lot of questions about our
Get bigger.
Yeah.
Any other reports from council? Councillor Martinez?
No, but I was just gonna say, uh councillor Smith and I are swapping for this month.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Just as FYI, Lori knows, but just as FYI.
Alright, um if there's nothing else then this evening? Going once, going twice. I had closed city council meeting at seven thirty-eight. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.